I'd like to call to order the City Council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, for Monday, March the 24th, 2025. If you would please calm yourselves and stand as you are able and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll of the members?
Jenny Snell.
Present.
Dan Larson.
Present.
Amanda Weaver.
Here.
Janice Hoppy.
Present.
Cory Stites.
Present.
Scott Ohm.
Here.
Leah Dozeman.
Counselor Dozeman had our excused absence this evening.
Thank you. Rachel Holtein.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Counselors, in your packet, you had several, several meeting minutes and study session notes, meeting minutes for February 10, 2025, and study session notes for the same night, meeting minutes for February 24th, and study session notes for the same night, and study session notes for March the 3rd, 2025. Are there any corrections to be noted in these documents? Seeing none, we'll let the notes and minutes stand approved with our thanks to the clerk. Are there any changes to be noted in the agenda? None noted, and so we will proceed with the agenda as presented. We have several proclamations. Now go to I'd like to invite Candace Coolridge to join me at the podium this evening. How are you tonight? Nice to see you again.
Great to meet you.
I'm really pleased to read a proclamation in support of Child Abuse Prevention Month, and I've invited Candace Coolridge, who is the Porchlight Executive Director, to join me here at the podium. Whereas every child deserves to grow up in a safe, nurturing environment, free from harm and fear, every responsible person will agree that even one abused child is too many. Whereas the month of April has been designated nationally as Child Abuse Prevention Month, we encourage all community members to join in renewing our commitment to leading learning what we can do to promote safety and well-being of children. And whereas Wheat Ridge has dedicated individuals and organizations who work daily to counter the problem of child abuse and help parents obtain assistance they need. Whereas our community is stronger when all community members become aware of child abuse prevention and become involved in supporting parents to raise their children in a safe and nurturing environment. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships among families, social service agencies, schools, religious and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. And whereas Ralston House Child Advocacy Center works with law enforcement, child protection services, district attorneys, offices in the 1st and 17th Judicial District, and the community provide a safe place to investigate child abuse and provide victim services for children who have been physically and sexually abused or witnessed violence. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Bud Starke, Mayor of the City of Wheat Ridge, and the Wheat Ridge City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 to be Child Abuse Prevention Month, dated the 24th of March 2025. And this is for you. Okay, this, this was actually a presentation for Ralston House, and I've got another, hang on, because I've got, I've got another one. We, we got these a little bit out of order, but you all stay up here and we'll do both of them at the same time because they're both important proclamations. So this is a proclamation, and Jennifer Kempes, Ralston House Development Officer, is here with me. Thank you very much for joining us tonight. This is a Sexual Assault Awareness Month, April 2025, Colorado Denim Day, April 23rd, 2025. Whereas every day, women, men, and children across Colorado suffer the pain and trauma of sexual assault. And whereas sexual violence affects individuals of all ages, backgrounds, and circumstances. And whereas this crime occurs far too frequently, goes unreported far too often, and leaves long-lasting physical and emotional scars. And whereas during National Sexual Assault Awareness Month, we recommit ourselves not only to lifting the veil of secrecy and shame surrounding sexual violence, but also to raise awareness and expanding support for victims. And whereas at the state level, we must work to provide necessary resources to victims of every circumstance, including medical and mental health services, relocation and housing assistance, and advocacy during the criminal justice process. And whereas Porchlight Family Justice Center provides comprehensive legal, emotional, and critical support services for survivors of domestic violence, sexual assault, child abuse, and at-risk individuals, elder abuse, and human trafficking. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Bud Starke, Mayor of the City of Wheat Ridge, and the Wheat Ridge City Council, do hereby declare the month of April 2025 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and further recognize April 23rd, 2025, as Colorado Denim Day, encouraging Wheat Ridge residents to wear denim to show their support for the victims of sexual assault and highlight this issue in our community, dated the 24th day of March 2025. And I'd like both of these ladies to, to talk a few days. Which, which one do you have? Okay.
Hi, thank you so much. I'm here on behalf of Ralston House. We're the Child Advocacy Center, and we serve Jefferson, Broomfield, Adams, and Gilpin County. We see a little over 1,000 kids a year between our three locations, and we really appreciate the city of Wheat Ridge for all of your support. A big thing about April is education, and we're really supportive right now of Jeffco Public Schools. They're putting on a Safe Student Summit here at Wheat Ridge High School, and Ralston House will be part of that, to help educate parents and teachers about what to look for and how to mandatory report. So really, April's not just about recognizing Child Abuse Prevention Month, but really stepping up and showing your support on how to educate your friends, your family, and even your children on what to look for to be safe. So thank you so much.
I'm Candace Coolridge. I am the Executive Director of Porchlight Family Justice Center here in Jefferson County. And on behalf of Porchlight, I would like to express our deepest gratitude to the city of Wheat Ridge for officially proclaiming April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. This recognition is a vital step in raising awareness, supporting survivors, and fostering a community committed to ending sexual violence. As we reflect on the impact of sexual assault, we honor the strength of survivors and acknowledge the work still to be done. Porchlight remains dedicated to providing resources, support, and a safe space for those impacted, and we stand united in our commitment to create a world where all individuals are treated with respect and dignity. Thank you for your continued partnership in this important cause. And if you haven't heard about Jeans Day, look it up. Look up the origin, the origins of Wear Jeans Day, and why we wear jeans, to support sexual assault survivors and to show our support of survivors. It started back in, I believe, Italian Parliament, when essentially a ruler there said that the woman could not have been sexually assaulted because her jeans were too tight. The next day, all of the women were wearing jeans in Parliament. And so together, we can make a difference. I want to thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you all very much. Thanks for coming. We are now at our public's right to speak. During this portion of our council meeting, we invite members of the public to come and speak on any item that is not on the agenda. If you, when I call your name, if you'd please come to the podium and introduce yourself. Give us your first name and your last name. If you'd please spell your last name for the record. Tell us whether you live or, live or work in Wheat Ridge, just so we know whether you're one of our local residents. And you'll have three minutes to address the council. There's some timing lights on the, on the clerk's bench up here. The green light, everything is good to go. When the green light starts, starts blinking, your time is starting to decrease. When the yellow light comes on, you think you've got about 15 seconds. And when the red light comes on, if you would please conclude your remarks, we would appreciate it. So, and I hope I don't bungle too many names. It's always a little challenging. But Jean, Jean Fancinelli is at the podium first, with Julia Reese on deck.
Good evening. My name is Jan Fancinelli, and I'm a veterinarian. I've had a little holistic consulting homeopathic practice in Wheat Ridge at 4355 Gray Street for the last 28 years. I have shared that fence with the original car wash at that time, and it was never a problem. The only things we had problems with were occasional loud radios when people were vacuuming their cars, and they put up signs and that took care of that. I think the old car wash, they had no blowers. I think they did put one automatic in a few years ago, but it was not a problem. Since the new car wash, first of all, I want to say, we've been very pleased with the, the work that the city has done with us so far. Officer Kellogg, Officer Webb, and I talked to Patrick, the city planner, and we've gotten really good support for what we're, we're working with. I'm not able to work in my practice the way I have for 28 years. It's very disturbing. There's a constant drone of noise. I can't open the windows. I have a very quiet practice. It's a house, a zone commercial, and so it's an 30 minutes to an hour and a half consultations with my clients, and the animals are running around in the little exam room, and they're anxious now. I can't hear sometimes. It's so loud. So I've been measuring the sound, and tonight, when I left work at 6 o'clock, it was one blower with the door down with 68 decibels. So it's still over the limit, and I know they're keeping the doors down. That's just with one. I stopped three doors down to see if one of my neighbors was coming, and at their door, when I rang the bell, it was 58, and then up to 62 decibels for them. So my concerns are the quality, how it's impacting my ability to do the work I've done for 25 years there. And also, it's my retirement, and I'm really concerned about what it's going to do to my property value when I'm ready to retire. I feel blessed that I made, that I still love working at Sage and slung in, in work, and I still want to be able to do that. But I think that's it. Oh, one, yes. The main thing I want to say is there were no dryers before. So the, the car wash, that they would do hand spraying, it was never an issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Julia Reese, and Gretchen Johnston on deck.
Hi, I'm a resident of Wheat Ridge. I'm a Colorado native, a graduate of Wheat Ridge High School in 1981. So the topic of density is very important to me. My question is, who benefits from density? And, you know, when I see some of the density that this council has put forward, I don't see the benefit of it. It's, it's destroying the character of the area. And I'm very concerned about the zoning changes and how that affects us in the future. I have lived out of state, and I raised my children in North Denver, which is to be a beautiful neighborhood, and it's been destroyed. And I owned homes that were built at the turn of the century. I completely remodeled homes, and I, and the people that I was involved with were very concerned about the character of the homes and the character of the neighborhood. And that's gone now. They're scraping everything and destroying it. And I feel like when I moved back here and bought a home back in my hometown, after my children were grown, I thought I was moving into where I grew up, which was a quiet, lovely neighborhood. And it's not anymore. And I'd really like to ask you to consider who is benefiting? And I'd like to ask you honestly, have you taken any, any kind of benefit, financial or other kinds of benefits, from the people that will be doing the development and benefiting from you changing the zoning at the Lutheran site? I'd like to ask each of you to answer that question.
We don't, we don't reply during public.
You won't reply? Okay. All right. Because that is something that a lot of people have looked up, and they, they suspect that there's been some benefits. And so that's what I'm asking, is if we could consider two things. Who has benefited? And how does the community benefit from changing the zoning? Because it's really hard to see how that benefits any of us. And that's, that's my question. So where can we receive an answer to that?
Um, you know, why don't you, why don't you stay for the meeting, and we'll see if you find the, find some answers in the meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, this question she's speaking about is first reading this evening, so there will be no testimony, no presentations. But the city does have a, on its What's Up Wheat Ridge page, there's a whole page.
Yeah, I've looked through that. But I'm asking about campaign donations or any other personal relationship benefits?
There is none.
There's been nothing?
None.
Absolutely none.
Absolutely nothing. Okay. And that's, that's the final answer. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gretchen Johnston, and Liz Veder on deck.
Hi, thank you for having me. I'm here to speak as well about the car wash at 44th and Gray. In response to an email voicing concerns about the noise levels at Auto Wash and Lake, at Lakeside, at 44th and Gray, I received an email with this explanation from the Auto Wash management team, which I have here. They said, "During the permitting process, we followed all city requirements, including hosting a public notice meeting, and received zoning approval with no restrictions on noise mitigation. Our car wash operates within standard noise levels, with a maximum of approximately 80 decibels inside one wash bay." I'm just going to read some snippets of what I sent back. "Our community was very aware of the prior car wash operating and equipment, as we have lived on this block and experienced personally, day and night, what the impact of that car wash was on the community. They had one dryer within their one automatic bay. The remaining were self-wash bays without dryers, as you're very well aware. My husband, Mike, and I have lived across the street from that car wash that was operating for at least eight and a half years while we were there. And we found their business never once to impact our homes, lives, and peace in the matter that Auto Wash at Lakeside has. Not one complaint about the previous car wash from any neighbors. For decades, for neighbors, for decades, they operated prior to us moving. Now, obviously, this being their 26th location, and their only location with four automatic bays with four dryers, they would have had to know that the noise level from four 80-decibel dryers facing our residential neighborhood 24/7, operates 24 hours a day, seven days a week, would be impactful upon us and a concern. However, there was not one noise mitigation step implemented on their end upon opening the business almost two months ago. We do not know at this point if this was negligence of the city or to Auto Wash. The standards, from what we understand to be, city of Wheat Ridge is 55 decibels from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, 50 decibels from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM, and they said that one dryer operates at 80 decibels, times four. So we, things blinking. Sorry. So every other business and resident must operate across the board at those levels. However, they have shared that they don't, that doesn't apply to them per their email. So we're just wondering how they were able to receive that exemption from the city, and if that was in fact something that they were told, or something that they may be sharing to bypass those noise mitigation rules. We did attend the public notice meeting, where we personally had questioned sound level after they revealed the rendering showing that there would be four bays as opposed to the one bay of the building prior. And they, they assured us that the sound would be directed toward 44th and not toward Gray Street. So now we, as a community, living there 24/7, are the ones paying the price.
Conclude your remarks, if you would, please.
You got it. First steps of noise mitigation have begun, thanks only to the response to citizen outcry by wonderful civil servants like City Manager Goff, Division Chief Eric Kellogg, Code Enforcement Officer Webb and her investigation team, and our city counselors, Rachel and Scott. And we just want to hope that that could be mitigated further.
Thank, thank you very much for coming in tonight. Our next speaker is Liz Veder, with Carol Matthews on deck.
Good evening. Thanks for letting me speak. My name is Liz Veder, V as in victory, double E, D as in David or darling, E.R. And I live at 4181 Everett Drive here in Wheat Ridge since the 70s. And I'm just speaking about my concern about the ordinance approving a city-initiated zone change of Lutheran campus from planned hospital development, planned commercial development, residential two, and residential one to be changed to mixed use. And it seems to me like all four of those zoning categories would fit nicely, that I don't know why that all has to be changed, because my concern, what I look back to is where next to Lucky's, where that property was going to be townhomes, that type of thing. And then we have this huge apartment complex there instead. And so it just, it concerns me, because in my neighborhood where I live, my husband and I are the neighborhood watch captains, and we have an annual picnic, and we've seen our neighborhood change, and we talked to a lot of new people moving in, and they're all young couples with kids, and they all have a deep desire to have a yard, to have their own home, to have a place to raise their kids. And so I really saddens me to see Wheat Ridge continue to go on this march for increased rentals, rentals, rentals. Because I remember going to Clear Creek Crossing, some of the public hearings, and was asking, what percent of those dwellings will be privately owned? And they said, well, none. And I just would love to see that change. And this zoning change frightens me, because I would just hate to see that big, huge apartment complex, an example of that lifted up and set right in the middle of the Lutheran legacy. So those are my concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carol Matthews, and Walt Cordyce is on deck.
Mr. Mayor, I have a point of order, please.
Yes, ma'am.
I just would like to clarify that while you can speak in general about zoning or density, the Lutheran is on first reading tonight, so we don't take comment on that. The appropriate time to be doing that would be during second reading, or on the What's Up Wheat Ridge page. Prior to that second reading, you have the opportunity to do that electronically. So I see a lot of people who wrote zoning in there, but if your comments are directly related to Lutheran, please make them more general to zoning.
Thank you, Counselor. Ms. Matthews?
I am Carol Matthews, M.A.T.H.E.W.S. I am a lifetime resident of Wheat Ridge, and I live on 3851 Hoyt Street. And yes, my topic concerns Lutheran, but it concerns the whole city. It seems that the current trend is to rezone every R1, R2 to multi-use. And that seems to open the door for a developer or an investor to come in and build whatever, whenever, and have, we have no recourse. Lutheran Legacy is one of them. We have R2 and R1, and you've promised us for two years that the outlying lots are going to be low-density, either single-family or duplexes. And those zonings are right there, but you're going to change it to multi-use. I think we saw those garden homes at Lucky's turn into an apartment house because we did mixed use. We've seen a horrible building down on 38th on the other side of Kipling that's right to the street because it's mixed use. When I was on the neighborhood revitalization, our citizens of Wheat Ridge said, "You can develop the corridors, but stay out of our neighborhoods." And they didn't say that quietly. They said that loudly. Stay out of our neighborhoods. We want our neighborhoods to remain neighborhoods. We're losing our schools. We're losing our public lands. Our, with all these 5,000 people that you're going to put on Lutheran Legacy, they're going to use our parks. They're going to use the recreation center. But they're renters. They don't care. If they get too crowded, they can move out. They can park on our streets. I've been told our church is on 38th and Dudley, and I've been told if we want to protect our parking lot, it's up to us to put a fence around it and to put a lock gate there. Well, that's not churchly. It's been there for 75 years, and we actually owned most of that land when it was farmland. And now you're going to put all these people right on our front door and not protect us? What happened to the people by Lucky's? There's cars parked up and down those streets. You can hardly drive down them. Is this what we want for Wheat Ridge? This is what we hate about Denver and those, those crowded streets. Let's keep our Wheat Ridge what we were promised when we bought here, what we were, what we were promised when we developed the land. This was to be a luxury family community. And now we're turning into a high-rise desert. Please, please, consider. Be honest with the city of Wheat Ridge. Be honest with your citizens. It's R1, R2 on the outskirts of Lutheran property. There's R1, R2 up, down, and 38.
Okay. If you would please conclude your remarks.
Please be honest and keep it that way.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one more point of order, please.
Yes.
I would just like to please remind everybody who's coming up, please do not refer to Lutheran. We have processes that we need to follow. Tonight is only a first reading. It's not something that we should be commenting on in public's right to speak. I do not want to have to interrupt anybody. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Walt Cordyce, and Sandra Sands on deck.
My name is Walter Cordial, and I've been a resident of the city of Wheat My name is Walter Cordial, and I've been a resident of the City of Wheat Ridge for about 60 years. And I just wanted to bring up some of my concerns with some of the high-density changes and what have you that are coming in the near future. Throughout the entire process for a lot of the density changes and everything, I have been at a lot of the planning meetings, the city council meetings. I've not seen one negative vote from any of the council members, any of the building council. So I'm very concerned about the diversity of thought that comes out of these meetings some days, since there's no negative types of questions, but very, very little. Also, I've been a resident next to a group home, so up to 12 residents in there, which have continued, people coming and going every day, services they have, they make mistakes. I have people come to my house. I have people parking in my place. I get groceries, I get 40, 50 sacks of groceries in front of my house because they've got the Uber deliveries from the wrong places. I put up this, and I get no cooperation from the management next door. People parking all over it. And then if I'm going to have, I'm directly across from the Lutheran property, and if I'm going to have all the interruption from that, my quality of life has just been deteriorating all the time, the traffic, the additional, you know, changes that are going to come. Very concerned. I already have seen drilling in the property for soil tests and everything, so things are obviously moving along. The changes in the neighborhood are very concerning, and a lot of people that are here are concerned how this city is going to handle these growth changes as we go forward in this area. So, you know, you already see the pressures from Denver, Lakewood, Arbat, and a lot of these other larger cities around here. A lot of concerns, and I just hope a lot of this is considered in the growth of the next several years here. And like I said, hopefully there's some tough questions that you can ask from the builders or people, and any help to help keep the Wheat Ridge that we know and love the same, and not many direct changes that result from a lot of these different, what do you want to call it, incursions. And like I said, I'm on the front line of all the changes myself, and it's definitely, every single day I have issues with what's already next to me and what's going to be coming. Like I said, fire trucks, everybody's coming to handle the residence issues, all day and night, lights shining in through my windows and everything. It's very concerning to me about the changes coming down the road. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sandra Sands and Austin Caldwell on deck.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you, councilpeople, and those of you that are leading up our nice city here. I have lived in Wheat Ridge for 10 years. I am a voter, I'm a citizen, and I am happily retired from the state of Colorado as a social worker. I want to say, I hear a lot of issues, people complaining about the growth in Denver, Wheat Ridge, et cetera. We have a lot of expansion going on. Progress is never easy. It defeats culture, it defeats people's dreams, it defeats ethnicities, et cetera. That's not my complaint. I'm here to speak with my neighbors for the car wash. I live six doors away from the huge car wash whose ceiling is higher than this one, and the blowers blow 24/7. Now, you could say, once again, that's just another middle-class complaint about progress and growth. Well, in this case, it isn't because I am filled with a wonderful neighborhood of young people, working people, and Dr. Vincentelli and myself, she's still working, I'm not, but we still have early days, and we're surrounded with young people who have, are working all night or they're working all day. The car wash, unfortunately, as indicated by the reports, the decibel measure is way off the charts. I've had to keep my windows closed and my doors closed, and we're not even in summertime yet, and I refuse to use my AC because I try to protect the environment. So all I, I am speaking just to say that this ownership, this business who bought the land and opened up the new car wash, I think has a responsibility, the City of Wheat Ridge and to our neighborhood, to put up appropriate barriers, appropriate sound buffers to protect our neighborhood from the tremendous annoyance and disturbance to everyone, including young babies that just live a few doors away, et cetera. So any kind of help you can give us with asking this company to be fair when they want to be right on the edge of a neighborhood, I think that would be a really great courtesy for all of us as citizens to share with each other.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Austin Caldwell and Bee Connor on deck.
Good evening, folks. I'll argue mildly unprepared for tonight, as I wasn't expecting to be here due to work, but I think it's important for me to kind of support myself, my community, as well as my neighbors here. I am here speaking about the auto wash that was built on the corner of 44th and Gray. I live at 4350 Gray Street. I've been there for, going on eight years. There was an older car wash that was there that I actually used in the past. It was never a point of contest between anybody, my neighbors, myself, with my roommates, or anybody talking about in the area that even mentioned the car wash from a noise standpoint. They made an argument with our neighbor that, you know, they made efforts to reduce the noise associated with this car wash by placing it further and closing doors and whatnot. But I can tell you right now, as somebody who's not home a whole lot as a pilot, when I do come home, I look to seek refuge in my own home to enjoy my own personal relaxation and not live in a noisy environment. That was not part of the deal when I purchased my house all those years ago. And we're getting to the point now where it runs 24 hours a day. It doesn't stop. I wouldn't be surprised if it, I mean, I have not clocked it myself, but if it just goes on for hours and hours and hours. And good for them on their business standpoint, but at the end of the day, what I can't figure out is if we have restrictions surrounding the decibels of businesses in residential or commercial areas, be it, now, I don't know that this is perfectly correct, but from my understanding, it's 50 to 55, depending on time of day for residential, 60 to 55 for commercial. And it's a known quantity to be at 80 decibels per bay, and as mentioned, there's now four bays, their largest. I'm not quite sure how that was approved. I question my impact here tonight. This is a first for me, but I think it's important for us as a community to stand together on this particular issue because it seems to me that they have some responsibility to help reduce that noise impact, just for the well-being of those around, as well as, I mean, we bought homes there under very different circumstances years ago, and we're now in a position where, I mean, all day, all night, it's nothing to go to bed and hear that humming of the car drying bay. So with that being said, that's, I think that's my, that's my contest with this battle right now for the moment. I hope you can provide some help. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next, our next speaker is Bee Connor.
I'd like to talk about the thing with the zoning in that with Lutheran Hospital. I own two properties.
Mr. Connor, please, please don't reference the Lutheran Hospital site in your, in your presentation.
How should I say it?
You should, you should talk in general about zoning. This is, this item, this item is another item that we're going to, we're going to pass on first reading, and we're going to have a public hearing on this in about two weeks. So there'll be plenty of opportunity to speak about the Lutheran Hospital rezoning at that time, and there's appropriate time to do that, and we'd love to invite you back at that time when speaking is appropriate.
Well, that's what you can do then. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That's all of the speakers. I have signed up to speak in the, in the council chambers. I'll ask the clerk if anyone has dialed in online. Okay, that concludes our public's right to speak. Thank you all for coming. We will now go to our agenda item. Our first agenda item is item number one. This is our consent agenda. Councilor Hoppe, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to present Consent Agenda Item 1A, a motion to approve the purchase of salt materials for snow and ice control from Independent Salt Company in a total amount not to exceed $135,000. At issue, the city purchases and applies the ice or materials each year as part of its snow and ice control efforts. The city has participated in a cooperative bidding process through the Colorado Multiple Assembly of Procurement Officials to obtain the best pricing. The city will utilize the City of Fort Collins contract with Independent Salt to purchase materials for 2025 in an amount not to exceed $135,000. 1B, motion to approve the purchase of three police department replacement vehicles and installation of lighting and auxiliary equipment in a total amount not to exceed $208,670. Each year, the city identifies a proposed list of vehicle replacements within the city fleet. In 2025, eight vehicles were identified for replacement. Three of these vehicles were for the police department. Staff have researched various options with the police department and recommends the purchase of three Chevrolet Tahos from John Elway Chevrolet at the total price of $173,000, $173,170. Staff also requests approval to purchase and install auxiliary equipment required for the operation of the new vehicles, along with the installation of lighting and markings at a total additional cost of $35,500 for the total request amount of $208,670. Item 1C, resolution amending the 2025 fiscal year general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount $25,000 for the purpose of accepting a grant from the Colorado Gives Foundation. At issue, in February 2025, the Colorado Gives Foundation awarded Wheat Ridge Homeless Navigation Program $25,000 to be used to support people experiencing homelessness. A supplemental budget appropriation is required to spend these funds.
Thank you. This is our consent agenda item. May I have a motion to approve Agenda Item 1A, 1B, and 1C?
I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 1A through C.
Second. We have a motion and a second by Councilor Ohm. Would the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays. Motion carries.
Thank you. We will move to Agenda Item Number Two. Councilor Weaver, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. This is Council Bill 06-2025, an ordinance approving a city-initiated zone change of the Lutheran Legacy Campus from planned hospital development or PHD, planned commercial development or PCD, residential two or R2, and residential one, R1, to mixed use-Lutheran Legacy Campus, MU LLC Zone District.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the date, time, and location for a public hearing. May I have a motion on this item?
You may. I am, I move to approve Council Bill Number 06-2025, an ordinance approving the city's city-initiated zone change of the Lutheran Legacy Campus from planned hospital development, planned commercial development, residential two, and residential one to mixed use-Lutheran Legacy Campus or MU LLC Zone District on first reading. Order it published. A public hearing set for Monday, April 14th, 2025 at 6:30 PM as a virtual meeting and in city council chambers, and that it take effect immediately.
We have a motion and a second. Would the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays. Motion carries.
Thank you. We will now move to Agenda Item Number Three. Councilor Ohm, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to approve and adopt the Green at 38th Park name. At issue, the Green at 38th project is scheduled to be completed in the summer of 2025. The policy and procedure for naming parks and recreation department parks and facilities adopted in February of 2009 requires the approval of a two-thirds majority of the city council to name a new facility. As this project has been commonly known in the community as the Green at 38th stack, recommends its formal adoption by city council.
Thank you. This will be a motion of the council. It is not quasi-judicial. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
I think Director O'Donnell has a little bit to add, maybe, to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Sure, absolutely.
Director O'Donnell.
Yeah, I would just say, obviously, we've had this policy since 2009. I've been with the city for almost six years, and it's my first opportunity to use it to name a park. But yeah, we took this as required in the policy to the Parks and Recreation Commission. We did that during their February 19th meeting, and they approved the motion to move the name The Green at 38th forward for your consideration and hopefully approval.
Okay, thank you. I have no members of the public signed up to speak on this, so I'll go to questions from council. Any questions from council? Councilor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. And just a real brief question, because in the 2009 item, it describes that any proposals to change a park name must include reasons for the proposed name and as much evidence as possible in formal letters, petitions, and personal appearances. It sounds like it was, there was a general discussion of the park, but not a specific discussion or a survey of nearby residents or the city in general. Was there anything specific to the name of the park that was required?
I would say, it was mentioned in the council action form that this is the name that's kind of just been utilized for many, many, many years. But in addition to that, when we did some community engagement, specifically Brandon Altenberg, our Grant and Special Project Administrator, when he was communicating with members of the public, one of the questions was about any particular name that people were interested in, and nothing really rose forward other than what it's been called by the community this whole time. So it was brought up, not in any formal manner of, you know, as you've mentioned in here, people submitting letters or petitions or anything like that.
Thank you. Councilor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Director O'Donnell, correct me if I'm wrong, but that piece of land didn't have a name prior because it was part of the school? Is that correct?
That is correct.
So it's not a name change, it's just adopting a name?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any further questions? I had one. Director O'Donnell, sometimes in referring to things on 38th Avenue, we use 38 and not put the TH at the end of it, but this puts the TH at the end of 38th.
That is correct.
Thank you. Any, there's no more discussion on this. Councilor Ohm, may I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to formally adopt, approve and adopt the Green at 38th Park name.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilor Hoppe. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none? Would the clerk please poll the council? Is there a?
I was just going to say it's a great name.
Oh, okay. Well, you know, you didn't, you didn't show me your hand in time, so. Would the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays. Motion carries.
Thank you. Just wave it in front of my face and I'll see. Thank you. We will go to Agenda Item Number Four. Councilor Hulteen, may I, would you please introduce this item?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce Resolution 162025, a resolution in support of House Bill 25-1272, Construction Defects in Middle Market Housing. At issue, the Wheat Ridge Legislative Committee recommends that city council adopt a resolution in support of House Bill 25-1272, Construction Defects in Middle Market Housing.
This will be a resolution of the council. It is not quasi-judicial. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
I believe this presentation's from the council legislative committee.
Okay.
We do have staff here this evening if you have any questions.
Okay. Then I have no members of the public here to speak on this item, so I will go to the chair of the committee, Councilor Hulteen.
Thank you, Mayor. I will keep this brief because we did discuss it last week at the legislative forum. But for those who weren't attending or paying close attention last Monday, Wheat Ridge has stood up for the first time a legislative committee, and as part of that, we have been evaluating the different bills going, going through the legislative session. And we are using a criteria that both first has to fit the legislative agenda that this council adopted in January, I believe, sorry, a couple, several weeks ago. But the second thing is we're really looking at things that impact specifically the City of Wheat Ridge. By adopting this resolution, it is officially engaging the city to engage with our elected officials and stay engaged in the bill process. We identified this as one of our key bills. As, as many of us are aware, Wheat Ridge has prioritized addressing affordable housing. And one of the barriers to constructing affordable housing that actually gives people an opportunity to purchase a home and develop and gain equity is the lack of available condominiums in our community. One of the barriers to those condominiums is Colorado's construction defect law that essentially deter developers from wanting to take the risks of building condominiums. We really feel like this bill addresses those issues. We feel like it is a fair balance between consumer protections as well as eliminating some of the pressures that we're keeping developers from looking at building condos. So this aligns with our housing prioritization and priorities from this council. So this aligns with our housing prioritization and priorities from this council, and we are looking forward to working under the dome to get it across the finish line for this legislative session. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any, any questions from council before I ask for a motion on this item? Seeing none, Counsel Hulteen, may I have a motion on Agenda Item Number Four?
Yes. I move to approve Resolution 162025, a resolution in support of House Bill 251272, Construction Defects in Middle Market Housing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counsel Weaver. Is there discussion on the motion? Counselor Hoppe.
I just, for both of this and Item Five, I'd just like to say that I appreciate the work that our committee has done on that, that Council Member Larson, Council Member Hulteen, Mayor Starker, and Cole Hessepp from the city. So thank you, you guys.
Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays. Motion carries.
Thank you. We will go to Agenda Item Number Five. Counselor Larson, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution in opposition of Senate Bill 25001, Colorado Voting Rights Act. At issue, the Legislative Committee recommends that the city council adopt a resolution in opposition of Senate Bill 25001, Colorado Voting Rights Act.
Thank you. This will be a resolution of the council. It is not quasi-judicial. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
Again, we'll defer to the council legislative committee.
Okay. Counsel Hulteen, do you have a?
Thank you. I will keep this brief.
Presentation on this item?
Again, try and keep it brief. Thank you, Council Member Larson. So this was, this bill we are opposing, and in part because it is really trying to address things statewide, that we feel like addressing those things will interfere with what we feel are very robust, transparent, and successful voting mechanisms that are instituted both by our county and by the city. There are several very specific things that would interfere with our local control. Our city clerk provided really helpful insight and information about how this bill's written would actually interfere with our elected clerk's ability and our deputy clerk's ability to conduct our own local elections here in the city of Wheat Ridge. For those reasons, we feel like, while the bill is titled Colorado Voting Rights Act, we feel like it would actually not, it would not advance access to civic voice in voting, but rather create some challenges and difficulties for us with our local elections. So for that reason, we are opposing it. CML is an amend position, but it's fairly complex amendments and lengthy amendments. And so we will continue to track the bill if it comes into alignment. We would reconsider the position, but as it's written now, we feel like there's too many things that would need to get corrected to actually be able to allow us to continue our good, transparent, and fair elections in the city of Wheat Ridge and the county of Jefferson. Thanks.
Thank you. Before I go to questions from council, I'd like to invite members of the public to speak on this item. I have one speaker that has signed up, Mr. Mike Okada. If you'd please come to the microphone, introduce yourself. You may address the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, city council. I want to express my appreciation for the Legislative Review Committee and the experts that were invited to last week's study session. I had questions and maybe even concerns about the stance that the Colorado, the Colorado Committee was, was thinking about it, but those questions were very well answered by the experts that were there and also by the presentation just now, but also the thoroughness I wanted to express appreciation for and stand in support of Resolution 17. So thank you, guys, for making it nice and clear.
Thank you very much for coming to speak with us tonight. I have no other, no other persons that have signed up to speak on this, so I'll go to questions from council. Are there questions from council on this item?
Mr. Larson? Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may, a couple of other, a couple of additional points on this specific bill, that even though it is titled the Colorado Voting Rights Act, the bill targets municipalities while excluding state, school district, and special district elections. It encourages litigation against the cities that don't align with their elect, that don't align their elections with the state and federal contests, and it increases liability for those using at-large or district-based voting systems. While the city remains committed to supporting fair and accessible elections, it has concerns about SB 25-001. The bill undermines the city's constitutional authority to manage its own elections. It threatens the nonpartisan nature of municipal contests by aligning them with state and federal elections, and it creates substantial financial and legal risk for the city through costly litigation and unfunded mandates.
Thank you. Are there any further questions from council on this item before I ask for a motion? Seeing none, Counsel Larson, may I have a motion on Agenda Item Number Five?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution 17-2025, a resolution in opposition to SB 25-001.
Second.
We have a motion and a, and a second by Counsel Hulteen. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. That concludes our action items on tonight's agenda. I think the next item of business is City Managers Matters. Mr. Goff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I asked the Police Chief Murtha to stick around and give an update on the car wash. He was out speaking with all the speakers who were there this evening to give them an update. We've been in close contact with them over the last couple of weeks, but would ask Mr. Murtha to give a quick update on?
Chief Murtha, if you'd come to the podium and let us know what you know.
My apologies, I wasn't dressed to present to the council tonight, but?
You look just fine, thanks, Chief.
I do have information on our situation with the car wash as it stands right now. We received a complaint approximately two weeks ago, maybe a little bit more than two weeks ago, about the noise violations that, or the noise that was coming from the car wash, emitting from the car wash into the neighborhood. At that time, our, our officers went out, reviewed that, and believed it was certainly a noisy establishment. We took noise readings at the property line, just so you understand that a commercial noise is different from residential noise, and all noise is measured at the property line of the complainant. So the 80 decibel reading that they were discussing at the source of the noise is not where we would have a violation, would be at the property line. When we did do that, we did find that they were over and exceeding the allowable noise in the, in the ordinance that we have in Wheat Ridge. So we did have a sound, we do have a decibel reader in the city, but our decibel reader hasn't been calibrated this year yet. So we called Arvada, had them come out, and we found the same result. So ours was not really out of whack with what Arvada did. We subsequently spoke to the ownership there, didn't get an immediate response, other than their equipment was not working with the humidity, so they needed to leave the doors open, and they wouldn't be able to close the doors regularly. So we took readings at several other times of the day to see what the readings were, and they were all, almost all of them were in violation, especially when more than one motor was running at a time. We subsequently, to that, issued about 10 days ago a violation notification, sent it to the ownership of that group, asked to meet. We were supposed to meet with them last week, they canceled with us. We wanted to create an environment where they could prosper in their business, but certainly protect the needs of the neighborhood. That's our goal, it still is. We have a scheduled meeting, I believe, on Thursday with the, with the owner of this group. However, at some point, if it continues to, if they continue to push us off, we will probably end up adversarial in a court with them. That's, either track is going to depend on their response to the, to the complaints of the neighborhood and the violation. We did schedule a meeting with Community Development to go over the building permitting process. However, in those meetings, they don't issue a specific, unless they're issuing a waiver, they don't issue specific guidance. They just provide, point you to the, to the overall codes, building codes of City of Wheat Ridge, and you're expected to follow those. So there is no waiver that anybody has been given to create a larger noise footprint in that area. And we continue to push forward as quickly as we can. This is a process. I just explained that to the folks in the hallway. They are certainly aware that we can't do this overnight, but we're going to continue to work on this. Part of the issue that the management complains about is the, is the censors are locking people inside when the doors are shut because they're steaming up. So we've offered them solutions based on other car washes we've had, such as venting through the, through the roof, but that remains on them to reinvest in this business to make it compliant. So that's where we stand right now, but I'm happy to entertain any questions that I might be able to answer on.
Counsel Hulteen?
Thank you. Thank you so much, Chief, for providing that input and all the work that you've done at this point. Have, were the, the sound measurements done with the doors up or with the doors down?
It was with the doors up, and then it was with the doors half closed. So they half closed them to try and mitigate some of the noise, and that hasn't, that hasn't met the sound, it hasn't met the sound regulation barrier yet.
And do you know how many of the motors were running? How many of the dryers were running?
We, we tried to do it with one, two, three, and four. We, we spent a considerable amount of time out there with the different motors. I think when there was one motor running at a time, they did meet compliance most of the time, not all of the time, depending on the door situation, with the door half closed. But when it was more than one, they almost always were in violation of the sound ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Larson?
Yeah, thank you. And, and if we're not able to get this resolved, what's the next step?
So it would end up in the courts, and they would make a decision about this business. And I don't know if there would be licensing implications or other after that, but this would certainly end up in a, in a court hearing.
Yeah, to maintain and keep a business license, you have to meet all city codes and regulations, so they're, they would be in violation of that, and so there would be a hearing to remove their business license.
Any further questions for the chief on this issue? Chief, thanks so much for hanging around. Oh, Counsel Hulteen?
Yeah, how, how are we staying in touch with the residents and community around there?
Chief Kellogg has been primarily tasked with this, and he's spoken to all of them several times, probably once or twice a week, at least, at least four times since we've had this noise violation, that Janice, Jan, and Gretchen have been the primary ones that we've been in contact with tonight. I've met the, the other folks who are here, Mike, the husband, and the pilot, I forget his name real quick, but we will continue to communicate with them as a group. And, and I, as I told them before, if, if we can come to a proposed resolution on the noise, and we have readings that satisfy the noise ordinance, we would take that back to them to, to try and make sure that everybody's on board with the solution moving forward. So that was my, that was my guarantee to them, that they'd at least know what we were talking about. We didn't independently come up with a solution if they don't feel resolves the issue, so that they can have some input in it. But they, they have Eric's number, and now they have my number as well to contact on this.
Great, thank you. Appreciate that. Patrick, it, it dawns on me, and this is just an aside that we'll have to pick up another time a different way, but, I mean, we have a lot of car washes in District Two. The 44th Avenue is like a parade of, of car washes, and those seem like, almost like an industrial use in terms of like the equipment. And so I'm just registering here, and we'll bring it up with my colleagues at a later date, but that maybe we revisit the allowable use for car washes. So let me do a little bit of work with you, Patrick, and staff, and then I'll bring it back to my colleagues for consideration on future study session. Thank you.
Can I, can I just comment on that real quick? After this violation, we've asked our community service officers to go out and measure other car washes that have automated car washes. Generally, I use the pipeline car wash for, for the police vehicles, so we, we wanted to make sure we were using a car wash that was in compliance. We started there. Seems to be okay. But we are looking at other car washes to make sure we didn't miss, we didn't miss this one. So we're gonna, we're gonna probably evaluate every single one that has automated car washes.
I appreciate that. I have a car wash at, at the end of my block, and I have neighbors that complain because the headlights, because it's elevated, and they just, the way the headlights are, like the, the light pollution is problematic for some of my neighbors. The placement of that is up against the townhouses, and I know some of the townhouses, it's not the, the blowers, but the like, the vacuums. Yeah, like the, the, like, the little coin-fed vacuum things are pretty loud. So anyway, I think in general, there's like, both like sound and light pollution issues that make them maybe not the best things on our quarter, so thank you.
We'll enforce what we have on the books, and if you decide you want more, please let us know.
Chief, has there been any discussion about any remedial action that may be, sound curtains or anything that may be physically able to, to be applied to the facility themselves to abate the amount of noise that emanates from it?
Yes, we started with that with the ownership, that sound abatement, venting through the roof, similar to what Cole was able to accomplish over at Silver Bullet Gun Range over there, I think has really, you know, been a good path for us to follow, and not that we would pay for everybody's soundproofing, but in that instance, there was, money was available through a different method. But we certainly are, are taking it to heart that we, we do crime prevention through environmental design. I guess this is technically like a crime, so we're, we're trying to work through that as well.
Okay, good, thank you. Any further questions for the chief? Chief, thanks so much. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Goff?
Thank you, Chief. Just one other quick thing that you may have seen, I sent you an email last week. Unfortunately, we heard that Uncle Julio's Hospital in Colorado closed in Wheat Ridge, unfortunately. It was a very big surprise for us. The property owner did not even know. So trying to find out more information of what actually happened, so we'll let you know when we do. That's it.
Okay, thank you. City Attorney's Matters, Mr. Dahl?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thanks so much. We'll go to elected officials matters, and start with Counsel Snell. Well, I thought you would start chomping on chips.
On the microphone. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a couple of things. I wanted to just say thank you to our, our local bike and pedestrian advocacy, advocacy group, the Wheat Ridge Active Transportation Advisory Team, the ADATs. Back a long time ago, on March 5, they had a state-of-the-city meeting. It was very well attended, and I just wanted to say thank you, not only to them for organizing it, but also to Director Mikulak, Director DeAndrea, Alex Jones from the Police Department, Counselors Hulteen, Oom, and Larson, and myself were all in attendance, and it was just a great time to get together, hear about what's, what our city's doing as far as like bike and pedestrian safety and advocacy and infrastructure improvements. And it was just, it was really well attended and well organized, and I wanted to extend a thank you to them for that. And then in other news, it's spring, and I was just over at Panorama Park today, and the Columbines are coming up. So there's always some hope when it, when you got March, you got basketball, you got Columbines coming up, things are going to be okay, hopefully. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Hulteen?
Thank you, Mayor. I just really want to thank everybody who came out to speak tonight. We, we are only as good as the people who engage and participate, and I especially appreciate all of the District Two people affected by the car wash. They have been really considering how much it's affecting their quality of life and their ability to conduct their business. They've been absolutely like lovely and patient and clear and direct. So it's, it's hopefully something that we can, we can get resolved, and I just appreciate the city. And I just, I guess I want to also say, you know, earlier tonight, we heard from somebody who was asking us if we had accepted payments in exchange for zoning, and, you know, we are at a point in time where trust in government is, is really challenging, and I think understanding the difference between your local government and federal government is incredibly important. And it's, it's, it's just hard as elected official to sit here and have someone ask that question of us when there's literally absolutely zero evidence of it, and rather just a thought somebody had. So we have, as we talked about earlier tonight with our legislation, we have incredibly transparent and accountable systems, and everyone I serve with on this dais has been exemplary in terms of their conduct as running for office and since being elected for office. So I just, I just want to say, like, you know, when stuff like that comes up and it's based on nothing, I'm glad that we're able to sit up here and say there is absolutely nothing that anyone has accepted from anybody. It's us doing our jobs, but what we have done is listen to the citizens, and what the citizens have done is engaged in planning processes, and they have voted at the ballot, both for us as elected officials, but also for recent ballot initiatives, asking about what we want to do with our city and the charter. So, so what we do is listen to all of our citizens, and we know there's concerns across the board. We're not going to make everybody happy, but, you know, with, with confidence, I can say that I certainly know 100% and, and hope I speak for my colleagues, that we serve with honor and we listen to our citizens, and that's what drives our decisions. And there are elections every two years, and that's, that's where we make big decisions as a city. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Larson?
Thank you, Mayor. And speaking of car washes, if you've been, if you've driven by the intersection of 50th and Kipling lately, which is Target on the one side, and then the little shopping center and then the little shopping center with Little Nick's, really good pizza and retro barbers, where I go to get my haircuts, that old car wash has just been knocked down. Uh, it was an old four-bay self-serve with one, one automatic bay, and on Friday, the heavy equipment was there. They knocked it down. They'll probably end up, uh, having to do some cleanup at this site, but, uh, the good news, uh, for coffee lovers is that it will, it will be a drive-up coffee shop. Uh, the name of the company that's gonna build there is Seven Brew, uh, they're a chain, and, uh, this will be, I think, the fifth one of, uh, seven brews in Colorado. Um, and I understand their, their coffee's pretty good. I'm no expert on coffee, but I understand it's pretty good. And speaking of 50th and Kipling, if you've noticed, the, where that distillery, or I'm sorry, the brew pub was, um, the O'Reilly's Auto Parts, and I've, uh, whenever I have a, a car issue and need to get some parts, I would stop in at the O'Reilly's on 44th and Wad's. They're moving out of there, and they're moving over to 50th and Kipling, in that, in that little shopping center. So, uh, I foresee a future where that is gonna be a bustling intersection. There's gonna be a lot of activity, uh, lots of, um, commercial retail stuff going on, and, uh, I think that's good for the city of Wheat Ridge. Uh, and then, um, um, oh, I did have a question for staff, and let's talk about Kangaroo Ranch.
Is the chief still?
Speaking of, speaking of permit issues, uh, would you like to, uh, there was a story on the television over the weekend.
Yeah, um, so there is a, a business, Kangaroo Ranch, that does kangaroo yoga, is my understanding. Chief can help me with this, maybe. Um, they did come, they have kangaroos, little red kangaroos, I believe they're called. They're not the big boxing ones. Um, and they came to Wheat Ridge. They don't, that, they don't house the kangaroos in Wheat Ridge. They're at another location, but they bring them to Wheat Ridge to a location to have yoga, like they do with the goats, I believe. Um, they did not reach out to the city before they opened up their business. Um, they don't have a business license, and our code does not allow exotic animals in the city, and kangaroos are considered exotic animals. There is a waiver in the code for the chief to make that decision if he wants to waive that. Um, there is a process for that. He has communicated with the owner of this business, um, and as he's mentioned this evening, we haven't heard back, um, from that business, but they are not operating at this point. Anything else to add to that, chief? Come to the mic if you are, please.
I would just add that we're, we're trying to work with them to understand exactly what their business model is before I get to a decision. So I, I'm assuming it's like goat yoga, but, um, they are intent on trying to open in Wheat Ridge. Uh, however, they said if they can't make it work, they've reached out to other jurisdictions that want to have them. I said-